July 20th, 2022, and it's 6:04 PM and I call this meeting to order. And we'll do roll call first. Mayor Cortez, Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Styler.
Here.
Councilmember McLeod.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And our mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. And then if you'd remain standing. Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful city. And thank you, Lord, for, for the heat, even though we are hot. We do praise you for it. Lord, we do pray for rain. We desperately need it. And Lord God, we just ask that you be with us in all of the decisions that we make tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, and instead of going into executive session, since we do have members in the audience that are interested in the first action item, which would be the Freeland Engineering.
Have a public comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Can we just leave that on the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
It's there.
It's there. Public comments, okay, guys. Just so you know, the, I'm on the Verba Committee and you will be getting something from Charlie. We have finished working on this lovely, you know how many pages this is? Thirty some odd page, thirty-four pages for the revision. For your consideration, excuse me, for the revision for, obviously, the building along the river. Obviously, we think it's very imperative based upon the actions that are going on upstream of Skull Road right now. And I'm sure everyone here already knows about what they've required as far as permitting, that they're already working on that. So please, you'll be getting a copy of it in the next couple of days. It will be put on the agenda for the next meeting. And hopefully, Virginia will be here to help answer any questions. So like try to get to sooner than later, so you have some time to digest it. It is color-coded, so you know what's been changed, okay? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So does everybody have a comment?
You'll be getting it from Charlie in the next couple of days.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just, like, we finished it, we approved it last meeting, we just finished.
It's a property by Skull Bridge.
Yeah, this is our, we've been working on this for like seven, six, seven months, so.
So y'all will do a presentation at the city council.
But we're gonna get this to you quick, sooner than later, so you can start looking at it now.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because Jared will need to.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so we will go on to new business. The first item under new business would be discussion and action, Freeland Engineering. He was here last weekend, presented us with three designs. And we had quite a discussion as to how to word this, because these are exhibit one, two, four, and three. But when Mr. Turk was talking, he said option one, option two, and option three. So there are three options, and the city council did take a straw poll. Is there any discussion?
I didn't get to catch up on any of this.
Well, we can tell them briefly.
Yeah, let me tell you briefly. So what he presented was the original design, which would build a culvert from the Shu Tree down Northwest River Road, and the water would go between the two cemeteries like it naturally does now. And this now and this one are basically the same thing. So the next option would be to go between the McGoverns and the Petrovan properties to build a culvert. The drawback on that would be then the city has to maintain that for, who has to be turning it, which we would have to do here also. But this is a cross private property, which would be negotiated through the Costa Act. That would, I believe that shortens up some of the water that would have to go the other way. The third option would come between my property and my neighbor's property that is a B and B. But this is very, it's like 200 feet just from, from like this corner. And he was taking it, we're down here. Again, the city would be responsible for maintaining that by a debt.
And purchasing, purchasing that easement.
And purchasing easement. And so.
And it could have been frivolous.
Can I say this? Council took a straw poll and.
I don't think that happened. I mean, I think it was just for their input.
Input.
But I mean, there was, I didn't, I didn't see that poll at that meeting.
So no, we didn't put any yea or nay on this.
No, that's what we're here to do today.
Good.
And so officially.
So it's option one.
We have, we did not realize that we should have had it as an action item last.
Also, these two options are cheaper.
How much cheaper?
By.
It should be.
Prices in the old agenda packet, so the one for this.
Uh, that's why that was there. I was like, why is it there?
But may I add something, Nick?
Yep.
That doesn't include acquiring that easement properties.
Sure.
That, that money that was the savings was not, not having to get those properties. You have to do, which would be an additional. Because the original drawing.
He also said something.
It's about the, the liability.
Yeah, so.
Here's the map on the, with the little, there's a drawing that he made.
Pardon me?
About the liability of. Water flow, possible flooding.
Correct.
So on the.
Not on.
Right. Well, it's a big conversation, the mics cannot pick up many.
I got too many conversations.
I'm just.
One at a time.
What, Noah, did you say?
He also probably should mention the liability demonstration on the top right on exhibit one, where diverting with exhibit four and three will also increase the water level, the height, it would be a very insignificant amount, but it is, you could get in trouble for it.
Like if the water went here, it could increase, increase the water.
Yeah, it's.
And the same one here.
Yep.
And that's based on modeling, and modeling's not that accurate when it comes to a real flood event.
Right, Jared just came online, by the way.
The cemeteries had, there was a plus and minus, that's where he wrote the positives and the negatives. Do you mean option two or three?
Basically, it's cheaper to build. It's more, there's no necessarily, you don't know what the actual cost savings is because there's land acquisitions not included, and you have a maintenance issue permanently with regard to those because you're dumping into the river in a non-natural flow, and then you could potentially be sued by the people across the river for affecting the flow.
Of the river.
Of the river.
River range.
Yeah, it's potential. So with the original option, who maintains that?
The city.
But the city still does.
City's maintaining every, all, all three options.
Yeah, no matter what.
I was wondering who.
Also, all three of these options do not include paving roads and here quail, because there's not enough money in grants.
So that's out of here.
Yeah, it went to 8.2 million, the cost.
But this is the monies that we will have left over, and we could choose and probably kind of affect.
Except for we got an email from.
I don't know if we can.
Jessica saying that that was not in the original scope and scoring of the grant.
Having the.
Having the different options. And she cautioned us about promoting those options.
Which options are those?
The sidewalk.
The sidewalks, and then she said that, that they were not in the original scoring, and we got the grant because of some kind of scoring.
So, I mean, a big, big question for me is, are there any comparable easements like this within the city?
Let me, let me, please say one thing. The original, this is the original, the original plan. So the, the, the land acquisition would be right along the edge of the road.
Sure.
Which they've already talked about. So I just say in human nature, most people aren't gonna bitch about, you know, something on the, on, on Main Street or Northwest River Road. If they look, if they come in, they're gonna put a culvert in, they don't lose any land. But if you start doing this and this, you got potential people holding up in court lawsuits. And then what happens is, there's a timeframe, we could postpone our timeframe for the grant. Starting in construction, we could lose the grant.
Did it mention that you could extend that?
It could extend, but it could tie to.
Apply, apply to extend.
We could, but it could, it could throw some issues on it.
And the culvert that's already in place between the two cemeteries is already, say, 20 feet wide and 30 feet high. All they would have to do is put some riffraff and rock and metal fencing, you know, holding the rock back. For drainage now, in, in, in place.
And with the option, the first option, we can get to the project faster. And.
There's our ball.
We have to make a decision, so there's our ball.
So they can already get the ball.
That's what you're saying.
It's already saying.
I'm sure we can get an extension on grants. What, who, who put this up for us that?
Thomas Turk, our city engineer.
Any leaning towards?
It's the one who recommended, recommended option.
The other two options, I, I mean, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna even, yeah, you're gonna even it out just for close to purchasing that easement, especially the one by your house, because that's a long.
And you're talking about easement. Now, see, these are the numbers of, of people who have row and easement parcels. Now these, even though this one has more, ten, it's gonna affect 10 different easements.
Yeah, well, it's just.
But they're small, and this one.
How much, how much land is, does it go up? How much does it go up into their property?
Both property owners do not want it.
Most, yeah.
Both of them do not, for these two options.
I'm saying, I'm saying for option one.
My, mine is 22 feet.
But into your, into your property?
More than it currently is.
22 feet on option one?
On all options, just at the front end.
It's, it's just on the road, you wouldn't.
It's 66 feet, it's 66 feet across the road.
Yeah.
Right now, if you've measured, they stated it goes into my yard. I'm, I'm gonna lose 22 more feet than I had before, 30 states, I have a mark on my property.
Me too.
I'm gonna lose that no matter what.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, to be compensated somehow, or god, I'm sprinkling, that's a whole nother discussion, no matter what option.
Sure.
What they're saying is, as you go up the road, the few of the people on the riverside would not lose it. If they went down my street, down my property. The negative is you gotta buy my property.
Yeah.
You know, which is a 25-foot easement along the side, so.
All right, so from the road to your house, right?
Yeah, right now it's gonna.
But it's 20 feet, 22 feet this way, and may, and how many feet from the road to your house?
Well, it's a long way from my house.
22 feet, and.
The road with the easement is gonna be 66 feet wide.
Across, yeah.
Including the drainage ditch. They're gonna leave the drainage ditch, they're gonna put the culvert underneath the road. And they're gonna need 20 odd feet on the, on the side of the road in order to build the road. They're gonna take, they're gonna take that land as an easement. Because they need that to build the road, they need the 20, it's no different to go down 80. They need that, you see them doing it, they need, they need another lane and a half to do the construction.
I have it too, I mean, we all have that stake in, in our front yard, if you live on this, I mean, throw away.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, you're late, you're late, you're just getting an easement on your, on the front of your property, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna give the vote on this, I mean.
Are you ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, by the way, I was just, I was just looking at this. I meant to look at it after the last meeting, but there is good case law that the section of the water code that we're talking about, the diverting or pounding of water, is 11.086 of the water code. But for a governmental entity like a city to be liable, there must be an express waiver of liability set forth by the legislature. And case law has interpreted 11.086 to not in fact be an express waiver of liability, allowing a municipality to be sued.
Oh, great. Okay. Did you say that in the fourth speech?
She said, oh, great.
Because I'm like the mayor, I just noticed.
I think she was just agreeing.
Mainly saying, we're not liability for.
No, we are.
No, we're not.
Oh, we're not.
It is, it is not an express waiver of liability.
Yeah, it's not an express waiver of liability.
Okay.
For any of these options.
Right, but based on, based in the diverting or pounding flow of water.
Just the opposite way. Um, Jared, would you like to weigh in? Do you have anything to say?
I got nothing to add, I think the council has a good grasp of the issues. And I'm supportive of any of the, any of the options. I do think option one has the least schedule risk, and so that's why I'm in favor of that one more so than the others. From a purely contractual basis, but I, I, I'm ready to support whatever council decides.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the alternative design option one for the Red River Road Hazard Mitigation Project, which has the work, the water diverted to the.
Between the cemeteries?
Yes, to the culvert between the cemeteries.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion?
Intercept for a second.
Yes.
This is to option one, is, the maps have names on them.
Oh, okay. Option one would be exhibit one and exhibit two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, it also has option one. Oh, yeah, it does have.
Let's say option one there.
Agree.
Good, good. Okay.
Didn't that, were you?
Yeah, just because I need to save the maps.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
I vote for option one.
And Sam?
I second your next.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Sonya? For option one.
Well, you're just saying yea or nay, I guess.
Yes. And Nick, how do you vote?
I agree with, yea.
So the motion carries.
Sounds good.
unanimous, that was easy.
Okay, good deal. Um, so now we will move on to the next action item about the city's involvement in the Martin Del River Appreciation Day and designating $1,000 from item 6520 election expense to item 6010 miscellaneous expenses. 7010.
So, so it's normally, we have about 8,000 in the budget for election services, I, I guess. And so we're diverting some of that money from that 8,000?
Yes.
Okay, does someone wanna talk about this thousand, Sonya, what it's for, or?
Um, basically, it's going to be used for closing the street down and the payment for the officers. I think we wrote it all down the last time at our other meeting.
And we're sharing the cost of the band that will come that night.
It's on this flyer.
Yes.
And so, okay, so some of the payment is going towards the plaques that we are, that the mayor has ordered for the groups that we're honoring, that we're gonna be recognizing. It will go towards, to defray the cost of the officers, the street closure, and then for, if there's anything left over, whatever amount is, to help to go towards the band.
Okay, so, I mean, I thought before we were talking about the helmets and the life jackets for the kids and rodeo.
That's for the bicycle rodeo, that's taking place that day, that's a separate event.
Okay, so we're not talking about funding anything for this, this is a separate.
This one, for this, the River Appreciation Day, we do, as a city, want to give out life jackets.
So when we voted on the children's fund, the safety fund, that was for the rodeo day, and we've already ordered the helmets, and a few other expenses.
And the life jackets will come out of that safety fund, along with the educational aspect of it, about river safety, wearing a life jacket, you know, all of that, being safe.
I'm pretty excited about both of these events, they're.
Just to distinguish, these are, yeah, this is other flyer.
It's the child rodeo.
But that's not what's in discussion tonight, it's this River Appreciation Day.
I see, okay.
And then, so like, the River Appreciation Day, there's going to be a focus on, you know, with our parks, you know, being very popular, it seems like the amount of the influx of visitors that are coming in, which we, we do want people to visit our parks, and we do want them to, you know, come to Martindale. And, but we do also want to place an emphasis on respecting the parks, you know, putting an educational message out there, not to litter, and not to trash our parks. That's why we're, we're correlating it also with the Central Texas Donzantes, they will be doing a performance, and that will be to, you know, honor our community and our rivers. And then the band that we have that's going to be coming, they're Los Nahuatl, they're from San Antonio. They are an indigenous band, but they do, they do perform in English and in Spanish. And what they sing about is the earth, mother earth, you know, pertaining to the waters, the rivers, you know, so it's very, it'll kind of all go together. There will be organizations, nonprofits, that will be giving out, you know, informational, they're gonna be passing out information about their organizations, the amount of trash and litter that's been taken out of our parks. There's gonna be one river organization that is going to be selling stuff that they actually gotten out of the river, like sunglasses or whatever they found, so that money is going to go back into their organization. The nonprofits that are coming, you know, we've had interest, I believe, even from a group in San Antonio. So there is buy-in, the county, our county commissioner, Eterio, reached out to me, and he also would like to be involved, because he said there needs to be more involvement as far as from the county and with the city of Martindale, because the river is also a part of Caldwell County. So by this, being in unison and being, you know, together in on this, it's gonna show your, their solidarity from the city and the county, that we do want to make sure that our river is protected and that our parks are preserved. And, you know, we want people to visit, but we also don't want people to litter or to drive our park.
And, I mean, I know recently, on the Fourth of July, we gave some money from the hotel tax for like an art appreciation thing. I mean, this seems like something that is very similar to that. I would assume possibly that the money could come from that hotel tax promoting tourism thing. I mean, this paying, because we paid for the band, we paid for.
Yeah.
This is only a one day event.
This is just a one day.
Oh, I see, because this is during, just one day during the day.
Basically, what we're asking the council board is to find the, the infrastructure, like, the, well, they're not gonna be porta potties, they're gonna be potties over here, we're paying for the cleaning and stuff like that. And police, and, you know, any kind of infrastructure is what, and it may not be a thousand dollars in my field.
It almost doesn't sound like, like it's enough, considering all the.
And I mean, now, the election expense.
Here it is.
We're, we're, we have nothing to spend it on.
I see.
Well, the elections, the elections, since we haven't had to put on election this year, we will be having an election.
Don't get on the budget.
We'll probably have to pay for that contract, it's looking like it'll be about a thousand dollars, but it might be more, so we don't want to take all the money out of there.
Okay.
So that's.
Sounds great.
That's all we're asking.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve the city's involvement in supporting the Martindale River Appreciation Day by designating $1,000 from item 6520 election expense to item 7010.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any more discussion?
I would just like to add that also, that day, I know that we're gonna have our disposable container ordinance sign out there. I know that Mike, you know, when I originally started talking about this, I called Mike to reach out to him, just to kind of like touch base and bounce ideas off of. So Mike has been very involved in this as well. And, you know, so that's gonna be a time to, you know, showcase and highlight what, what kind of precedents that we would like to set in our community. And, you know, I'm very proud of the involvement, and would, I want the council members to all be, you know, involved in. If you can, if you're available that day, I would, I would love your help, we would love your help.
August 13th.
Yeah.
Mark a calendar.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, Sam, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Sonya?
Aye.
Jan made motion, and Mike seconded it, so Nick can vote.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, and now on to the next one. Same thing, we need to move money from the election fund to to repair the police car, makes according to vehicle repair and maintenance. We've had the Explorer in the garage twice, we thought we had it fixed, and it was a different problem, actually, that it went back into the garage this last Friday, and.
That's the newest car?
No, that's, the Explorer is the older car.
The 2017. Old ones, but you had flat tires. We're not gonna even drive it.
We're not, no, I think we're. I've talked to Chief about that.
Yeah, let's approach that when it comes.
Comes, yes, if we can get anything for him, we will.
Is it, is it a major issue with the vehicle?
We're hoping it's just a water pump, but even if it's a water pump, I don't know what that's.
That's not too bad, just so we didn't blow a head gasket, would be fine.
I don't think that that's that serious.
Okay, good.
Is it 2017?
2017, but it has a lot of miles, I think it has about 100,000 miles on it.
It's nothing for you, Sam.
It's just that we're asking to move that much, just in case it's more expensive than what we think. As of, today at five o'clock, we still hadn't heard back from the mechanic as to the exact problem. They're shorthanded also.
It's hard to find a good mechanic.
Yeah.
4,000, 4,000 is a lot, but.
Yeah.
We don't need that much.
It's not to exceed 4,000, so it may be.
It could be less.
Yeah.
But so we need that.
That's fine.
All right, I make a motion to move not to exceed $4,000 from the, from item 6520 election expense fund to item 8135 Vehicle Repair and Maintenance Fund.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And Nick?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, so we will take just a few minutes break, and we're gonna go into. Okay, it is 7:12, and we are returning to regular meeting, and we have no action to report. And so we are ready to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn at 7:00.
I make a motion that we adjourn at seven thirteen.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I second.
Okay, and Nick, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, and the motion carries.
That was the quickest Martinville, anything I've ever done.
And, and paint your little flyer with you.